This meeting is called to order. I am Mayor Beverly H. Burks. At this time, I will do roll call. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Carroll. Councilwoman Yasu.
Present.
Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
And Councilman Perkins.
Present.
And I want to recognize our interim city manager, Tammy Sadler Jones. Are there any updates, changes to the agenda? Hearing none, then we will proceed with the presentation of administrative business, which is to approve the following minute, the meeting minutes. Two six twenty twenty four. City council. Meeting and two twenty seven twenty twenty seven, twenty four, city council work session.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the following meeting minutes. February sixth twenty twenty four city council meeting. February twenty seventh twenty twenty four city council work session.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the following meeting minutes. Two six twenty twenty four city council meeting. Two twenty seven twenty twenty four city council work sessions. Are you ready for the question?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. We'll go into reports. Our planning and economic and development report. Manager, director is not in, so we will not have that report. We'll move into the interim city manager's report. Interim city manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I would like to start off by introducing Ms. Melissa Piniate. Piniate. She is being recommended this evening to serve as our interim city clerk while our permanent city clerk, Tamika Mitchell, will be on maternity leave starting actually Friday, or her last day will be Friday. And so I just wanted you all to have a chance to meet Melissa. So thank you so much, Melissa. The next thing I wanted to mention is we are seeking volunteers for our Rivers Alive cleanup. We would encourage you, if you are interested in participating, to please come out on this coming Saturday, March the ninth, from nine a.m. to twelve p.m. There are flyers in the back if you are interested in participating. However, this event will be weather permitting. The makeup day will be on Saturday, March the sixteenth. So we encourage you to participate if you're interested. The next thing, I do want to remind the public that the city of Clarkston has allocated funding through the American Rescue Plan Act for anyone that needs legal assistance regarding tenants' rights. If you need help with repairs or maintenance, unlawful evictions, or unreturned deposits, we encourage you to reach out to the Decal Pro Bono. We are working with them. And there are also flyers in the back if you seek this assistance and you can determine whether or not that you will be eligible for that service. I did want to tell the public that our YouTube channel is now working. It has not been working in about two years. So I want to thank James Hammond with Icon Film Works. I told him to get it done and he got it done. So thank you so much, James, to you and your team. And then the last thing, I did want to remind the public that Friday, March the twenty ninth, is a city holiday, spring day. So city administrative offices will be closed on Friday, March the twenty ninth, and we will reopen Monday, April first. So that's all I have at this point, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the city attorney's report. We, one second, we can't hear you. He is remote, so. Okay, try and talk now. We don't hear you.
I'm not muted.
Okay, there we go. Okay. All right, here we go.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Glad to be with you virtually and that my audio is working, but I do not have a report at this time.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And we'll move on to council remarks, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
I have nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Yasu.
No report.
Okay. Councilman Carroll.
Meeting yesterday, hopefully some agenda items will be coming out of. Other than that, no report. I can't hear me? None at all? We had a productive Housing and Infrastructure Committee meeting yesterday. Hopefully some good agenda items will be coming out of that. Otherwise, no report.
Councilman Yasu.
I'm sorry, I forgot to report on the, I had a meeting with Lisa, our planning and development director, on how to implement the recommendations that were made from the Environment Transportation Committee. And I was hoping that she would update us, but I will make sure that she will follow up with us through email or through our next meeting, I believe. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Councilwoman Bell.
Yeah, I'll be brief. So we, so I had a meeting with Senator Office in regards to economic development and business development in our city, and how could they work collaboratively with us? So be in the works for more information and more outreach from their office. In addition to that, since we have so many people here, I want to optimize on this time to urge people and ask them to sign up to be on one of our standing advisory committees that already exists. And we would love for more individuals of the public to join us. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, I attended as co-chair of the Housing and Infrastructure Committee with Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you. And Councilman Perkins.
Thank you. So first off, I want to thank interim city manager Tammy Sadler Jones and our economic development coordinator, Jacob Bowie, for joining me at the meeting with Professor from Kennesaw State University just to explore some funding opportunities with the Partnership for Inclusive Innovations, community research grants. Also intended a symposium for Penn's Community Research Symposium, looking at ways we can leverage technology to address equity issues within the city. And also had a great time with the second graders at International Community School talking about municipal government and what it means to be on city council. And I just want to remind everyone, early voting is going on for our primaries. So if you haven't voted already, you can do so at the Clarkston Library. I voted last week, or this week, last week. And it took me a matter of minutes, just as long as it took me to fill out my form. So if you haven't already, I'd encourage you to exercise your right to vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. And I'm glad you brought that point up. I actually, we really pushed to have that early voting at the library, but they were saying that residents are not coming out. So we want to encourage people to use the Clarkston Library to do early voting because as long as you live in Decal County, you can leverage that. So if you work and live in Decal County, make sure you use the library because it's an opportunity for people who walk. You don't have to go to Memorial, you don't have to go to Tucker, it's right here. So I want to make sure if you can pass that word on to your community, that you have an opportunity to vote in your community. Thank you for that. And as far as any additional, I work with the Housing and Infrastructure Committee. I've also been working with Commissioners Bradshaw and Terry to address the traffic issue on Norman Road. So we have been looking at calming ways to deal with the traffic that comes up and down Norman Road. And Mr. Kaiser, as well as the interim city manager, the entire team has been looking at that because what happens on that road, whether it's unincorporated to cab or in the city, impacts all of us. And so we recognize that on that road, between even seven to seven, you have people driving over fifty-five miles an hour. I mean, it was ridiculous. So we're looking at traffic calming measures. So we wanted to make sure from the residents' perspective, we're all collectively, county and the city are working to make sure that we address those issues for you. With that, and I also participated with seven other female mayors throughout Clayton, Fulton, and Decal County who were first. And so it was a very nice way to end Black History Month. And so with that, we will move into public comments. And any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comment. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to fourteen minutes, and it is not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly and timely manner. So with that being said, we have a combination of maybe people online as well as here inside the chambers. I want to make sure in terms of when we start the timer. It's clear. And so Ms. Mitchell, who do we have signed up online?
Medford. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Amy Medford.
Okay, all right, Mrs. Medford. Mrs. Medford.
She should be able to unmute. James, if you want to try to unmute her.
Hello?
Okay. All right, Mrs. Medford.
Okay. I just wanted to bring up a few points on the late night ordinance. I'm really concerned that, we tried this once and it didn't work because the businesses wouldn't actually follow the rules that the city had set in place. And they kept breaking the ordinances and breaking the ordinances between not having the correct number of sales, noise violations, and other things, and would only follow the rules if the city sat on them. And I don't think that's something that we as a city have the time, money, or energy to do. It also speaks to me, to the heart of the business. If the heart of the business is not willing to follow the rules on their own and govern their own selves to follow the rules the city has set to allow them a business, that's not very responsible. It just seems like pretty poor business and poor community relations. So that's one of my major concerns. My other big concern is that while this is said to be on behalf of all businesses, only one business has shown up to speak. And I don't know if the city has heard from any other business outside of this one, but I would like to know where are the other businesses that seem interested? The other thing is restaurants don't need late night ordinances. Restaurants can usually close by ten or eleven and serve enough customers to be successful. In fact, the Ponce City Sports Lounge, which is across the street from where I live, that has been a restaurant for many, many, many years, including when the new owner bought it. It was purchased as a restaurant. Only now, based on their current ads, current advertisements, they'd rather be a bar or a club with things like drink specials and happy hour being advertised. Doors opening at nine p.m. or ten p.m. That's not a restaurant. That's a club. That's a bar. That is not the same thing. And that's just not an appropriate use of that space right next to a neighborhood. We have zoning laws that provide spaces for that kind of activity to happen. And perhaps it would be better for that business to find a place or a location in an area that can be zoned properly for late night bars and things like that.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Medford. Who do we have next? Mrs. Mitchell.
Ira Jenkins.
Okay, Miss.
Ira Jenkins.
Okay, one second.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, Mr. Jenkins.
Yes, I just want to echo everything that we just heard. And I just would like to add to that, that I'm not sure if allowing businesses to stay open until four a.m. is going to attract the type of attention our community needs at that time of the morning that could present other problems. If we are known as an area where when you get done with your bars, you know, in Decatur, Tucker, Atlanta, then you come over to Clarkston and cause more havoc by drinking more and staying out even later, that could bring up issues with traffic, issues with potential crime. And I just don't think that our community is set up for that additional responsibility and stress at those hours of the mornings. So that, in addition to everything else we just heard.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Who else do we have? Ms. Mitchell.
No one else has signed up online. However, there is a signup sheet that Carmen was asked.
Okay. All right, Ms. Carmen, can you start with that first person? Pause my thing. Okay, Ms. Carmen, if you can let the first person on the list. So I need you to speak up.
Just spell it, maybe.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Spell it, ma'am.
Gothman, Deb.
Oh, Debbie Gothman. Debbie, just state your name and address.
Do I move?
You find where you are.
Debbie Gothman, nine two eight Mel Avenue. I have three things to talk about. Number one, for thirty seconds, I really want us to find a bigger space to me. It feels like if all the citizens want to be involved and you want them to be on committees and stuff, you can't turn away people at public meetings. And that happened last week, and everybody was freaked out. Done. Next, new business. I want to talk about B and D. B, I live in that neighborhood. And as those guys are weaving out of that place at four o'clock in the morning and running into our trash cans and smashing into our mailboxes, I don't like it. I don't think it serves the quality of life that we want to have in Clarkston. I feel like if his restaurant part was open and they were making good food, I think he would make a ton of money because the Afghan guy right across the street's only been open two weeks, and I'm seeing a line out of his restaurant. And he's only been open two weeks. And of course, people are just test driving it, but I think the business could make money that way. I don't think two more hours of drinking after two o'clock in the morning is good for Clarkston. And I would not, I don't want to see other restaurants doing it. I don't want to see any restaurant doing it. I think it's bad for Clarkston. Last, D, to consider the adoption of an ordinance allowing the city manager to purchase goods and services and enter into contracts is exactly the problem we had with the last city manager. I think it's a terrible idea. I think that the city council needs to rubber stamp everything, along with the attorney, maybe. But we saw what happened before. We don't want that again. Why is that on the agenda? I was stunned when I saw it. I couldn't wait to call you all up. And I do have your numbers, and I will be calling. Bye.
All right, thank you. Who's next?
Mayor, Ms. Mitchell was going to call out the names.
Okay, all right.
Fiona Kennedy. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Last name is Temelso, T E M E L S O.
Yes, come to the podium, state your name and address.
I hope you can hear me. I don't need a microphone. Thank you.
Speak in the microphone. There you go.
Okay. My name is Askadum Temelso. I've been in Clarkston and the surrounding area for the last twenty-six years. And my address is ten eighty-four. I have a property in Jolly Avenue in Clarkston, more than ten units. And also my office is very close to border between Clarkston and Skadial, my HR block office. So a lot of people in my community live in Clarkston area. And I'm also the leadership in the El Triana American community. And the office is just across the Memorial Drive. And many of our members are living in Clarkston area. And a lot of peoples in my community, they work late. Late and they get out of work from midnight and so on. And they really want to relax, entertain in the city, in their areas. Me personally, I go to Clarkston Ponce Cafe, and we stay late. For the last twenty-six years, when I see here, I never had any problems or issue or big violence. And Clarkston, nineteen ninety-eight, when I'm here, and now is very different. Clarkston is very changing, progressing in social, in many aspects. Similarly, economic aspect has to grow that way, very fast, in restaurants, hotels, clubs, and so on. Look how safe environment in Clarkston area. So that's why people, they go and like to entertain in small cities, like Stone Mountain. Can you imagine, it's less than two miles from here to the most important park, Stone Mountain Park. People come from all over the nation. They come and they entertain in small Stone Mountain city, and they come to Clarkston too. If we avoid all these restaurants, clubs, entertainment areas, who going to come and spend money in the Clarkston area? So we have to think that way. Maybe I'm fifty-six. If I think everybody has to live the way I'm living, it's not right. People have their own status, their own criterias. So stay late, restaurants, clubs, and so on, is so important, so vital to the city as it grow. If you grow economic aspects, social aspect, and all the environments, it was so great. Clarkston has been changing recently, maybe the last ten years, a big change. Big change in terms of safety, in terms of economy, cleanliness, all these things. So people in my community, even my apartment, my tenants there, they entertain in Clarkston area. They really want to spend their monies and all these things in this area. So I really encourage this late opening because so many of peoples in my community, they work late, midnight, one o'clock. They want to come and have some fun. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell, who's next?
Michael Marques.
Mr. Marques.
Good evening. My name is Michael Marques. I live on nine oh six Mel Avenue. And, okay, I'll try to be as brief as possible. Last time I wasn't too brief. But last week, we talked about, what was on the agenda is to discuss late night operations for certain restaurants, plural, okay? There were no details in the packet about what that was about, just late operations, that's it. In the description of the packet, that was under all headings. Nothing for anybody to know what it really was. We come to the meeting, and what we found out is it's just about the Pond Sports Lounge, okay? And it is about late night alcohol sales. In fact, about bringing back ordinance nineteen four thirty-three, which was the four a.m. sales, which was repealed for reason in twenty twenty-one. Now, this weekend, I mean, this week, we, I'm talking about bringing back this four a.m. without really having, I don't get the feeling that we thought it through, okay? It says, let's talk about what's the stated purpose and the reality. You know, the stated purpose is to have a place where people can go eat. Where people who work late can go eat, have a bite, and another drink. What is the reality? The reality is that the food sales at the Pond Sports Lounge are being done via an overlay restaurant, what's called the Ghost Kitchen, that works exclusively through delivery services like Grab Hub, Uber Eats, and so on, okay? And you can and should verify this. Frankly, that's just plain, simple due diligence. So basically, they are not meeting the conditions of, you know, it says subject to conditions, you know. That implies there should be some enforcement, and there is none. is none. Uh, so I have no confidence that there would be this time around. The, um, from what I hear, they're not serving at least two meals a day during the, the times that are required. And the sales, uh, of food are really a separate business, um, AJ's Kitchen at Ponce Sports Lounge, which actually the address, if you want to pick it up, pick up your food, is somewhere in Atlanta, okay? It's, it looks like a warehouse on, uh, if you go on Google Maps, uh, Street View. So, um, let's, let me just very quickly touch on what I think will happen if we, uh, reenact this, okay? Uh, people will see that the Ponce Sports Lounge is, is, is actually doing this and getting away with it and, and gaming the system. And if I'm a business owner, I say, hey, I want to set up a, a bar. This is the way you do it. And, uh, I think sooner or later we'll end up with, um, bars at every corner until four AM. It's not the kind of city I want to live in. I think, uh, you know, if we want to set up a separate place for bars, you know, that's a different story. But having a bar in a residential, residential area, not, not a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Marques. Ms. Mitchell, who do we have next?
Omar Shakay.
Good evening and hello, everybody, all my friends here. Uh, my name is Omar Shakay, Executive Director of Somali American Community Center. I have been working with refugees and, uh, within Clarkston community the last thirty years. Um, my point today is I am a Muslim. Uh, I can break conservative community. Um, most of my people probably will not allow me to go to a bar and drink. But the point here is not that. The point is, are we gonna block ourselves and be narrow minded? Or are we gonna be inclusive and bring everybody? Or are we gonna stop somebody to earn a living? No matter, it might be different from my, what I will do. So that's the question we are here today. It's not what I believe, it's not what someone else believe. It is what's right. Clarkston is getting bigger. We want one day, if not now, to open up these bars. It's not for my children, but maybe it's for your children. And there are culture, culture is different. And that's why I'm here to support, to extend these two hours. Because it's necessary, it's a culture thing, it doesn't harm anybody. If you go to Decara, at the bottom is a bar, upstairs is residential. There is no problem. If we just follow the rule and do it the right way, there is no harm. So that's why, at some time, it's now, we need to extend this if we want to become an inclusive. But if we want to judge ourselves morally, you know, and throw anything we want, say, oh, this will be a crime, this, there will be this. I can come up with million things to stop everything we do. So let's not stop people earn their own money. Refugees work hard. It's hard for small businesses to grow. It's barely any business in, in this area, I know, small business, they don't make money. The last thing we want to do is put more pressure on them. So that's my point, is let's people do what they love to do. Let them earn right away. If they want to extend two more hours, that's fine. Believe me, I am the most conservative person in this, in this right now, beside Mama Amina. So, so I'm saying, please, let's think deep, let's narrow our mind, let's not scare everybody. People deserve to earn money their way. That's all I'm saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell, who do we have next?
Nolan Evans.
Mr. Evans.
Hello, hi, everybody. Nolan.
Okay.
Uh, I stay at, uh, ten thirty-five Council Drive. Um, I've been here like two decades going on, decade and a half, well, maybe two decades and a half. But anyway, uh, I'm, I've been raising three kids and Clarkson been very safe to me. I mean, I have lived in Atlanta, I have lived other part of the cap county, I have lived Necto in Skadell. And, you know, we don't have no control over what people does so late at night. But, um, I cleans up, up and down Mel Avenue. The gas station, package store, I cut grass. And I don't hear no violence, no, uh, trouble or anything going on at the Ponce. And my kids walk from, from the house to the store and I never had no problem. And I never had any, any problem at my house, like, uh, strangers walking in the yard or anything like that. I just feel like, um, small business like that, I mean, they need to, you know, grow. And since the time I've been here, uh, Clarkson been blooming. I mean, all up and down Ponce, back up. Uh, you got new business coming in left from right. I mean, I, I think Clarkson and Ponce is the same place. And what goes on behind the, or the Ponce, I don't see no effect on the hours wise. When you got cars goes up and down the street, some people look over and grab their telephone, they'll knock your mailbox down because they're not paying no attention and that's everywhere. But, um, like I said, my kids love it, they love Clarkson and the school system around here is very good. And I got two A-one students that go to Jolly. Well, let me be fair to you, I got one A go to Jolly and I got one go to Freeman. And I don't, I mean, I don't see no problem.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mitchell, who do we have next?
Robin Sands.
Do I sign up?
Robin, come to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you.
I didn't sign up. I did not intentionally sign up on that list. Oh, I guess I, I signed in. Okay, never mind.
Did you want to or?
I'll just save this very quickly.
Can you speak in the mic?
Yes.
And just state your name and your address.
Uh, my name is Robin Sands. I live at three seven three zero Carroll Park Drive. Um, I've only been here for a few years. Um, but I love Clarkston, I love the people of Clarkston. I do not object to bars in general, but for a tiny little one square and a half mile, we're a very loud town in the middle of the night already. I've been woken up even over here by some of the cars. And I don't know who's coming from the lounge and who's not, but I do know we have traffic issues. I do know we have a lot of noise issues. And I've talked to a number of people who live on Mel, who've reported what seemed to me to be major issues. So I don't understand the need for the extra two hours. It seems to me that most cities that open until four end up rolling those kinds of decisions back. So I would encourage you not to extend the hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell, who's next?
Next, first initial is T, last name is Mogayo.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm from, uh, thirty-nine twenty-four, Ponce Sport Lounge. My name is Tess Fimaria Mogayo. Uh, I hear all the residents, uh, neighbors, I hear the bad and the good things. Um, this particular issue came to, to me personally and like my neighbor said and, uh, the other neighbor said, we did, got investigated. We submit our food, liquor and, uh, uh, sales and the city is getting this, uh, uh, report We report it by low, the city monthly. Uh, another people saying another stops, I don't know, it's not that, not that I know that we are, uh, not by, uh, we are not following the rules. And the people that we serve, most of them, they're from East Africa, most of them limo drivers, most of them, they work another city parking, they work in, in restaurant. A lot of people, they came late to us. And I, I just like show you and then, uh, I, I point out directly what affecting us is we're not able to get to our people, but the time that we have. And we are open at eleven thirty AM in the morning. And we do serve two hour, two, two, uh, lunch and dinner and late night dinner. And, uh, our doors open, anybody cannot, can, can come and look. If they want to come, anybody can come at eleven thirty and come and look for yourself if you want to. So, uh, the accusation is wrong. And then we have six or seven gas station that are being allowed for twenty-four seven to work. One of them is next to me. Nobody came and say a word as a neighbor, as behind you, twenty-four hour permitted to, to run and nobody came and say anything as a concern of Mel Avenue? Nobody saying anything? And only come for this? And it's kind of like, it's a bias to me while people complaining about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell, who else do we have signed up?
We have Mary Abera.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm here to advocate for the-
And state your name and your address.
My name is Mary Abera. Um, I live close to Clarkston, I live right around the corner in Tucker. But, uh, I'm an advocate for the restoration of Ponce's operating hours. Um, and as a member of the community, I have experienced firsthand the value Ponce brings to our late night social gatherings and post-work meetups. It serves more than, uh, just a place to grab a meal, it's a hub for connection, um, especially if I work late sometimes and I want to go grab some food with friends, you know, it's just a nice spot, it's safe, there's always security, you know, so I feel pretty safe there. And, uh, with its current, current early closing hours, many of us find it challenging to find a convenient spot to unwind after a long day's work. Um, I think the only, like, uh, late night spot is Strokers, which is a strip club, which I'm not trying to go to as a female. Um, and, um, the last meeting I was, I attended, I heard that there was like, uh, independent investigator who, um, submitted a report and she observed that Ponce was not in violation of any sound ordinances. Um, and she came, you know, different times, um, different days and late night hours. And she said, if anything, it was the gas station. So, um, by extending the Ponce's hours, you'll not only cater to the needs of the community, um, but, you know, it will just help all around in terms of like economically as well. Um, thank you for considering this request.
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell, who's, who do we have next?
Last on the list, we have Alum Gettio.
Yes.
All right, please come to the podium and I'll see you, Amina.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alum Gettahun. I'm coming, uh, behalf of Ponce Cafe. I'm the owner of Ponce Cafe. Um, Jimmy say he can't pay rent because of the late hours. If we don't extend, if you guys don't extend for him, business is going down. Um, I don't know what to do. I've been over there almost thirty years and I don't have no problem. And Jimmy, he do what you guys told him to do. The sound, he have the sound system. I always go over there and check, I don't see any problem. So I just come to support Jimmy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Ms. Amina? Well, let me make sure. Ms. Mitchell, no one else was signed up?
No one else has signed up.
All right, and, and I'll let you go ahead, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and City Manager.
Speak, can you speak in your mic and state your name and your address? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Manager, I mean, Mayor and City Council and City Manager. Okay, I'm here now. I came today to support Ponce Lounge. Since this fight, we are fighting about hours and my, our neighbors, what called Marques, what his name, I don't know, I don't remember now. He just against about the business. And people who are against about this business, I think city council members and police should go and investigate about the sound. And I'm asking you, please add him those two hours. Because even he doesn't have enough workers. Because now, to pay the workers, it's very hard because you cut his hours. And we ask you, please, can we come together and do, can you come and, can you make investigation and see the sound? In gas station, there is many people come with their vehicle, it's a loud music in their vehicle. So you complain about Ponce. So we want to see what you are going to do about this. And I have one complaint. Can I complain, one more extra complaint? I have one city council member, she has my money and I want her to pay me. Yes. And this will be, and I'm asking police, chief of police to help me to report about this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then we'll have Kim.
Good evening.
Go ahead and state your name.
My name is, um, Kim Alt. I live in Clark Estates. Uh, and, um, I'm coming and saying that this is definitely a tale of two cities. And, um, in twenty-eleven, when we were, when we had our, um, meetings as to what the vision of Clarkston would look like, I think it was called the twenty forty vision. My, my request, um, I'm, I'm in that little box that they have. I asked that instead of us doing gentrification, that we do revitalization. And what I meant by that is that we have people that whatever country they come from, entrepreneurship and hustling, that's what they know how to do. So we, as a government, have the opportunity to undergird them, which is what all, all of these big multi-billion dollar businesses do. We can do that with micro enterprise. There's also something called setting a precedent. Now, I was born in America, but culturally, I'm, I have the same type of experiences as people from Africa and other Caribbean nations. And they don't start, they work very late, they, um, they don't start to go out until, um, very late at night to eat because everybody does work late. So I'm going to, again, challenge us as a collective community to, we might not agree, I'm not gonna go to Ponce because Ponce, because I don't like the, the smoking and the hookah and whatever else. But that's, that's okay because my children, they like that. You understand what I'm saying? My adult children I'm talking about. What I'm saying is this, is that this is an opportunity, once again, and I challenge us not to undercut someone's livelihood for, you know, for expedience. What, what I would like to see us do is to, um, really understand- What, what I would like to see us do is to um really understand and learn about culture. Because American culture, even with the festival, when we have our hours, the people from the Caribbean and from Africa and from Asia, they don't start coming until four o'clock. We're over at four o'clock because American culture, if it starts at ten, we're there at nine-thirty AM and we're gone at three. The people that are of a different culture, they're gonna, it starts at nine, they're gonna get there at three and they will stay until ten. But again, because of cultural differences, these are the things that will, will make us stand out and become a beacon on how to do it. So this is your charge as the creative counselors um and city uh mayor and city manager that you are. So thank you so kindly and have an excellent evening.
Okay. Well, I got you, Kim. I got you, Kim. I let you do two. I let you do two. So I wanna make sure anybody else that didn't have a chance to speak before I close. Young man right there. And state your name.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kishif Hutchinson. Uh I'm in the neighboring, I guess, community Stone Mountain. Um as a young adult, I'm thirty-two years old, it's kinda difficult for me to travel from, I guess, say from Stone Mountain to travel thirty miles to go into Atlanta's vicinity to go have a good time. I'm not very opposed to a business being opened later hours for a shorter distance to save an extra couple dollars or maybe a safer ride home because it's cheaper to pay for a twenty-dollar Uber to go from Clarkston to Stone Mountain versus paying a fifty-dollar Uber. Or let's say, for instance, drinking and driving. But that's the main thing a lot of people are probably mostly concerned with, with a business opening in that time. I would probably, most likely, if I lived in Clarkston, I would like to walk to the bar. That, that would be nice to do, you know, if I, if I'm living in this area. Also seeing that this is a, I guess, how would you say, a melting pot of cultures or ethnicities or backgrounds and that what. This is what I believe the American culture is bred upon. You know, this is where everybody comes from. This is, come here for an opportunity. And I guess we have this hustle culture or entrepreneurship, or that's what they like to call it in layman's terms. I believe people need to understand as a whole that without the growth within the subcultures or of other cultures or an understanding that you work nine to five. I work nine to five as well, but it might not be nine AM to nine, five PM. It might be nine PM to five AM. And you have to understand, or people have to understand, that everybody has a different nine to five. And as a whole, I think it would be fair because this is what America's bred on. Entrepreneurship, freedom to do this, freedom to do that. I don't think a business should be held back because well, I can't go to sleep at night because a car is driving right down my street. There's gonna be cars driving down your street every single day for the rest of your lives unless they're electric. And they're gonna sound like uh nothing. So what, what, what can you really take away from a business that's trying to succeed? At the end of the day, and you have twenty-four hours, but gas stations that come with kids or people who are under the influence playing their loud music disended and they're open to do that every single day. And I've never heard anybody complain about somebody at a gas station. What about the other businesses? Thank you.
Thank you. And so with that, we'll let everybody speak. I let you speak now. We're gonna go ahead and close it out. And so we'll move to old business and then, and again, thanks to everyone who had the opportunity to speak today and express your concern and your opinions. No old business. We'll move to consent agenda and consent agenda are items that the council agreed didn't, did not need, need additional deliberation. So with that, we have from A to L in terms of consent agenda. So I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the items on consent agenda. And shall I read them individually?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Councilwoman.
To approve a proclamation designating March as Women's History Month. That's A. B, to approve a resolution authorizing an agreement with Cana Consulting LLC for professional services for an interim city clerk position in the amount of five thousand dollars monthly. Item C, to approve the city services agreement with Amani Women's Center to provide a workforce development program beginning in two thousand twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-four, funded through the ARPA grant in the amount of eighty-two thousand eight hundred. Item D, to approve the city services agreement with the Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation, VCOF, to provide services and programs to Clarkston Veterans residents in two thousand twenty-four, funded through the ARPA grant in the amount of six thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Item E, to approve an agreement with Clarkston Development Foundation, Inc. for the Tell Me a Story Program funded through the General Fund, that is the Community Action Budget FY two thousand twenty-four in the amount of seven thousand dollars. Item F, to approve an agreement with Clarkston Development Foundation, Inc. for the Clarkston Early Learning, Learning Task Force, funded through the General Fund, Community Action F, uh Budget FY two thousand twenty-four in the amount of ten thousand dollars. G, to approve an ordinance approving de-annexation of parcel eighteen oh ninety-five oh nine double oh eight at ten seventy-eight Nielsen Drive. Item H, to approve an ordinance approving de-annexation of parcel eighteen oh ninety-five oh nine double oh nine at eighteen, uh ten eighty-six Nielsen Drive. Item I, approve SPOSS two Mel Avenue at CSX Operational and Safety Improvement Project. Item J, to approve re- the resolution declaring results of the SPOSS, SPOSS two election. K, to defer the list of SPOSS two projects to be considered over the next three years to a special called meeting with the Transportation and Environmental Committee and the Housing and Infrastructure Committee to consider the amount for the potential bond issue. Item eleven, uh I'm sorry, item L, uh to approve an ordinance amending Article Four of Chapter eleven of the City Code require, requiring, regarding regulation of bona fide coin-operated amusement machines to reduce distance restrictions for licensed establishments to require that applicants for new coin-operated amusement machine licenses provide a survey with their application and for other purposes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you ready for the question? All in favor of the items on the consent agenda from A to L, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass. We will now move into new business, starting with item eight A. And at this time, I will allow Councilman Perkins to step out for that vote. Thank you very much. He recused himself. And so we will have this as a vote. It was initially on consent agenda, but because we wanted to make sure um he had the opportunity to recuse himself, we had it as new business. So at this time, I will entertain a motion for this one. Councilwoman Bell?
Thank you. Uh I wanna make a motion to approve the city service agreement with the Clarkston Community Center um to provide ESL classes to the Clarkston residents in two thousand twenty-four, funded through the ARPA grant in a total amount of forty thousand.
I second that.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve the city services agreement with Clarkston Community Center to provide ESL classes to Clarkston residents in two thousand twenty-four, funded through the ARPA grant in the amount of forty thousand. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor to approve the city services agreement with Clarkston Community Center to provide ESL classes to Clarkston residents in two thousand twenty-four, funded through the ARPA grant in the amount of forty thousand, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion pass. And if Councilman Carroll, if you could bring Councilman Perkins back in, thank you. We'll now proceed. As soon as Councilman Perkins comes back and Councilman Carroll, thank you both. With item uh eight B, which is to approve an ordinance amending Chapter Three of the Code regarding alcohol beverages to allow late night sales for consumption on the premises, subject to certain conditions. And so I'll start that. I know that some of the council members have talked about this, but um we'll go ahead and allow Councilman Yasu to start off before we make the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So uh I appreciate all the council member I spoke with um about this. And um I also had a, an email exchange with our city attorney regarding um a, a language that um I believe that could be added to strengthen it. Um and I am considering tabling this agenda item to make two changes. The first change is gonna be to add a language to limit the window for uh businesses to apply for such um, for such a license um uh by a month. The second language is gonna be to add a language sanctioning any business that violates existing ordinance or, or this new, potentially this new ordinance um by uh first would be um warning. The second violation would be a, a, a fine of an amount of two thousand dollars. And the third would be, a third strike would be they could lose those late night hours. And uh after that, the fourth strike would be that they could lose their alcohol license. And with this two, with this uh two major amendments, I feel like um the council uh would uh consider this uh new uh ordinance amendment. Um I wanna ask if Councilmember Bell wanna add anything?
Yeah, so I hear the two amendments that you have proposed for future discussion and consideration. What I didn't hear was the process of ensuring the validity of the sanctions that you have recommended upon us. And the other thing is, I know that you spoke with the uh city attorney probably before today. But I would be curious around the process to go in and then change a lot of these things because a lot of these functions that you mentioned, especially number two, is administrative function as far as enforcement. So I have a lot of questions in regards to the tabling and proposals that you put set forth, but yeah, it is at the pleasure of you since you uh introduced this piece of, this thing, item on the agenda to figure out those nuances to those things that you have proposed to see if they're even feasible and legal.
Can, can I, can I get the, our city attorney to respond to this?
Sure.
Especially the, the window of application window.
Cause I know that was something we had before.
Yes.
So uh city attorney, Quinn?
Yes, uh good evening. Um so I don't see any legal problem with limiting, you know, opening a window for this license and then closing it. Um the city is given very broad powers to put limits on alcohol under state law. And I think this is something that fits within uh what we're allowed to do. One thing I heard Mr. Yasu say that we cannot do is fine someone two thousand dollars. The maximum fine that the municipal court can give out is one thousand dollars.
Okay. I meant a thousand dollars, sir.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Well, and then the other things were revoking alcohol, late night out ordinance and revoking alcohol ordinance. Or, excuse me, revoking late night permit and revoking all-around alcohol permit. Those absolutely can be done. The mechanism for doing that is in place in the city code now. It involves the council voting to do it, but I think that as a way to set expectations with the licensees, as well as anyone in the community that's interested, it would be perfectly appropriate to indicate in the ordinance that this is how the council intends to act upon successive violations.
So I, what, if, if I'm hearing correctly, all those recommendations are doable and those amendments can be made to our draft, our next city council meeting?
From my, from the legal perspective, yes.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
All right. I move to table an ordinance amending Chapter Three of the Code Regarding Alcohol Liquor Beverages to Allow the Late Night Sales for Consumption on Premises Subject to Certain Conditions, to make two amendments. Amendment one is to include a language limiting the window of uh businesses to apply for, by one month. And the second language would be add a language sanctioning businesses that violate any of existing ordinances or this um, this proposed ordinance. Um the first sanction would be um a warning, the second would be uh a, a fine in the amount of a thousand dollars. And the third sanction would be um losing their late night hours. And then the fourth would be losing their alcohol license.
I second.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, all right. It's been properly, go ahead.
So I have a point of order question. So my understanding from a parliamentary standpoint, is that tabling a motion happens within a meeting? So are you wanting to defer this to the next meeting specifically with that language? Or do you want to give opportunity? Like, for now?
So you can, if, and council, that's what, that's why you saw a pause with, with what I was doing. Um you can literally just say you want to defer it to the next council meeting and make sure those things are added to the agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
When it comes up. Is, is that more of your pleasure in terms of that? I mean, because when you put it back on the agenda, all the things that you've said, you can ensure that that-
They are included.
Included along with um working with the legal department.
Yes.
Our attorney.
Absolutely.
Okay, so if that's the case, would you mind rescinding that motion? And then um going back and just making us, us a straight motion where you defer it to the next work session?
And uh, Madam Mayor, uh Councilwoman, too, if you don't mind, I have a question for you too after you move.
Uh I have a question. I wanna ask our city attorney. Um so if we pass this ordinance, sir, with these amendments, would that be doable? I mean, we already know what the change water make.
Oh, to pass it? You mean to go ahead and vote on it tonight?
Yes.
No, because our uh, our code requires that the ordinance be in writing and present at the meeting. And the document that we have doesn't include a lot of the stuff. I mean, I think you did a good job of explaining it, but we wouldn't technically be following our own rules if we were to vote on some. And you know, from time to time, we have minor change of word here or there. It's not meant to stop that, but these are some significant substantive changes. So I think that if we want to include that, the next meeting or a special meeting, if, if there was an urgency, but not tonight would be the time for it.
Thank you, sir. So I move to table this uh, to defer it until next city council meeting.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Are you ready for discussion? Any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um so is, I've looked through kind of what was sent and just based on the, you know, the community discussion. Um you know, I think we have a, a conflict on a number of fronts. You know, one is, is the way that uh uh our values differ and then also our realities differ. You know, we've talked about different cultural aspects, which are important. Uh you know, I grew up in South America and one of the first places I lived was a nightclub that, you know, had some solid base going on uh way into the uh, the wee hours of the morning. Um and so I, I understand that, you know, that's not something I'm looking for right now. I know that that, you know, that, that is a value for, for some folks and I, I think we have to respect that. On the other hand, for folks who do have the nine AM, you know, uh- On the other hand, for folks who do have the 9:00 AM, you know, clock in time, you know, being kept up at all hours of the night or dealing with, with, you know, increased traffic and things like that can impact them. And so I think as a community, we, you know, again, we have sort of this, we're, we're at a point where we've got to work through our differences in values and our different realities and find something that works. And so my, my question, I think, and, and concern with moving this for a month is, just as I thought about this ordinance, even the pros or cons, I, I can see there being potential okay things with, with moving forward with it and then also potential problems in both directions. And so my encouragement would be that we maybe defer this longer than just one month to give our city staff an opportunity to look at comparative policies in other cities where it's working well, where there isn't conflict, you know? And, and maybe we don't find anything. Maybe we have cities that have tried it and they say, you know what? Y'all, this just isn't working. It's, it's too much of administrative burden. There's an impact on our city infrastructure. I think that could be another element. Again, looking more detail, potential penalties and, and also enforcement capacity. You know, we may have penalties, but if we don't have the staff capacity to be able to go get up at 4:00 AM and go check on something, then one, it's not going to be fair to the businesses who are going to be working on, you know, hearsay and he said, you know, siege said type arguments, you know, versus actual evidence, you know, to either support or, you know, or, you know, a complaint or defend the business. You know, additionally, I think, you know, we need to look at auditing requirements as well, you know, with this. So my, my point of listing these, you know, there's a traffic enforcement component. Some folks have, you know, brought up an impact on, you know, folks driving while intoxicated. You know, how are people getting home? There's a number of things that could make this, you know, an okay thing or it could go sideways again. So I don't know if you would be open, Councilman Yasu, to, you know, asking our city staff what, how much time they need to maybe do a more in-depth review of this, so we're not just copying and pasting with, with a few modifications what we had before and allowing them an opportunity to give their recommendations, you know, if, if any, on how we should move forth, move forward with this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Yasu.
First of all, I just want to say a few things. Number one, we're not, this ordinance is not a discussion about any specific business. I know specific businesses would come and speak on their behalf on themselves. However, this ordinance is not about any specific business, period. And we're not here to legislate which business is following which ordinance. This is something our city staff does and we're not here to judge which restaurant is following the 51, 49% rule or we're not here, we don't, we don't do that. This, the council sets the, the policies, but we're not here to, to make judgment on which restaurant is selling two meals or three meals. So I understand, we have freedom of speech. I absolutely respect that. However, I just want to say we need to be cognizant of the businesses as well because we are allegedly accusing them of things which might not be right. We may have heard something, but the city already is enforcing the rules. The city is already enforcing our two meals or whatever it is. And so please just consider that. And the other thing I want to say is I've heard and that, that some of the amendments are based on our discussion that, that we have done. And I've heard from Councilmember Hood that she was concerned that we could have some new businesses that might come to just for a specific purpose. So we could, in order to avoid that, we could put in a window for the application and that would reduce some of the concern that we heard today that we would have businesses coming popping every corner. So we want to help the existing businesses. We definitely want to help the existing restaurants. And we've done the same thing for gas stations. And so far, we have not had a problem. It's been working okay. I am open to, to see if we need more time, but I'm just thinking the more time we wait, this is the more businesses that will be lost. We've already lost so many businesses during the pandemic, especially restaurant business is getting harder and harder. So the more we wait, that's more time that we're going to lose another business. So I, I would believe that a month is sufficient enough and to consider at least to make some of the amendments that I mentioned. And hopefully that could bring some consensus within the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I'll go to council, interim city manager Jones in a second. I'll let Councilwoman Bell.
Oh, we go first.
I'll let you go first and then...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I appreciate my council colleague for bringing the recommendation and listening to our colleagues about what they wanted. And I also hear Councilman Perkins' point as well. My concern is that the recommendations do not address the issue that I heard from the public here today. A lot of them mention that like we're not at that intersection of meeting where we were and where we're going. A lot of individuals mention about the cultural norms that we have in our community that we haven't addressed. The also the fact that our city is trending younger, so we have to have something or somewhere for them to go. We also haven't addressed some of the issues that I heard in regards to noise. None of those recommendations, there's no mechanism that I've heard in there that addresses any of those. Because even the sanction piece, right? I think it's fitting to have sanctions for people that violate our laws that we have on the book. But what I didn't hear was what mechanism have we put in place that's going to yield a sanction inadequately for us to be able to assess that they effectively should earn that sanction? If not, I mean, it could be a list of things that people bring to us and then they get a sanction for it, right? And, and I hear the conversation around sustaining the business that we have, but we're a city where a majority of our tax base comes from residential. We don't even have enough commercial tax base to even balance out providing adequate service or advancement of service as the city continues to grow. So when we have the hours in the window, I think we need to intently and be very intentional about the thought process around that. Because limiting that window as the city grows also limits the type of businesses that can come here as the city continues to evolve and shift and change. And in addition to that, I do think that we need to, you know, consult with city staff around the mechanism on which we give sanctions to folks or enforce something. Because that still has not been addressed. I heard noise, noise, noise from so many people. Tell me how do those sanctions, any of those, address the noise issue? Now, we don't know where it's coming from, but we also don't have a mechanism to test it in order we impose any training that would occur, any equipment. I haven't heard any of that. So I think there are slew of things that also need to be considered, but I thank you for bringing forth the recommendations and I defer to you because you brought it to us.
Okay, and I'll also defer to our interim city manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, city staff research is what we do. I mean, we always look to what other cities are doing, other jurisdictions. Realistically, will we be able to have this done in 30 days? Probably not. I would say maybe 60 days would be sufficient for us if you want us to do a thorough job. Now, if you want us to rush through it, 30 days, but it's probably not going to be, you know, to your satisfaction.
Okay. And any other comments from them? Yes.
I want to mention something, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor? Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say that the sanctions would not be on just allegations only. They would be on proven something that was brought to court and the judge says you're guilty, you pay a thousand dollar. That's going to be sanctionable, but it's not going to be something where it just cannot be based on a complaint, just like any other one would do. So it has to be unproven. Can you give me the language for that, Mr. Quinn? It's got to be somebody proven guilty in order to sanct, to be sanctioned.
Sure, maybe you're looking for the term due process?
Yes, there has to be due process, not just based on allegations of somebody saying this person is not abiding by the laws or by somebody calling, complaining about noise. That probably might not be coming from there. So it has to be based on a proven sanction that then that person has to definitely be sanctioned and pay the fee or lose their license. But it would not be just based on complaints only. Complaints has to be substantiated by somebody being proved guilty by due process.
Okay, and Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you. I, I agree that, that this is going to require more research. And so I support Councilmember Bell's suggestions and many of the suggestions that Councilmember Perkins made as well. We have heard from our interim city manager that to do a good job of this would take 60 days and I think we do want a good job. And it's quite, it's quite complicated when we're talking about enforcement and sanctions and that sort of thing. And I will just let you know that there was another complication that was brought up late in the day today from a citizen who is saying that certain actions of certain businesses are in violation of some of the regulations about not advertising happy hours. So this is new to me and this is something that I think needs to be looked at as a whole when we're talking about taking this action. Thank you.
Okay. So any other discussion? Because right now the motion is to defer this to the next 30 days, next council meeting? Wait a minute, that's not giving city staff the appropriate time. So I think a modification in your motion need to be made because you're not the one enforcing it. And in order for it to pass and go through, you want all your i's dotted and t's crossed or it's a no. You see how that's played out. So I think to give this process, due process, we need to let it go through the proper channels. And that's just a, a suggestion.
Right, so 60 days is what, which month, which meeting is that? It may?
May.
I would, I would entertain that, ma'am. I would pull back my motion and I'll make my motion again.
So you can amend the motion, but...
Yeah, I'm just going to amend my motion to approve, sorry, to move, to defer an ordinance amending Chapter three of the code regarding alcoholic beverages to allow late night sales for consumption on premises, subject to certain conditions until May city council meeting.
Second. All right, so we have an amended motion and we'll deal with the amendment of that motion in terms of the May. It's been properly moved and seconded to amend the motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter three of the code regarding alcohol beverages to allow late night sales for consumption on premises, subject to certain conditions until the May work session or council meeting?
Council meeting.
Councilman. Well, we got to talk about it. We got to, we got to discuss what, what they come up with.
May work, then it's going to be...
So it'll be the April work session?
April work session, May city council meeting.
Okay, okay, all right. Ready for a question?
Yes.
All in favor to approve an ordinance amending Chapter three of the code requiring alcohol beverages to allow late night sales for consumption on the premise, subject to certain changes to the April, and that's what we're looking at, the April?
Work session.
Work session. Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Say nay. Motion passed. I'm going to do it all again just to make sure because we added the work session piece and do the whole thing. And that is to approve an ordinance amending Chapter three of the code regarding alcohol beverages to allow late night sales for consumption on the premises, subject to certain change for the April work session. All in, any discussion? Ready for a question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone say nay? Motion passed. Any abstentions? Motion passed. So it will be in April work session, okay? And so we'll move on to the next item, which is to approve the status and appointment to the city council task force. This was one that we were deferring to the next meeting. However, there's a component of it where we are eliminating one of the task force, which was the health task force, and I will turn this over to Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. So I think we had, the way that we phrased this in our work session may have been a little bit confusing because I think we added the dissolution of the Clarkston Preventive Health Task Force to our consent agenda, if I recall correctly, and then deferred the rest of the items. So I'm happy to make a motion dissolving that and then deferring discussion of the other task forces committees in council along with their respective appointments to the March and April work sessions, whenever you're ready, unless there's other discussion.
Is there a second?
Oh, that wasn't a motion. I was asking. Sorry, you didn't ask.
She got to make a motion, sorry.
Okay, so I move to dissolve the Clarkston Preventive Health Task Force and defer the discussion of other task forces, committees and councils along with their respective appointments to the March work session.
Okay, my second. All right, it has been properly moved and seconded to dissolve the task, the Clarkston Health Task Force and to move the appointment and the status of the city council task force to the March work session. Is there any discussion? Ready for a question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. Okay, so item D, which is to consider the adoption of an ordinance amending the charter to authorize the city manager to purchase certain items and services to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all may recall, I've been here about six months in this role. And in researching the code of ordinances and our charter, currently the city manager has zero spending authority, zero. And so in order for the city manager to run the daily operations of the city, to purchase goods and services, to contract for professional services, as an example, I would like to request that the council establish a spending authority for the city manager. For example, the city of Tucker, city manager's spending authority, $30,000. City of Decatur, $25,000. City of Stonecrest, $25,000. And that's just a few in this area. The two previous cities I worked at, I had $25,000 spending authority. And so in order for us to move this city forward, in order for us to move projects forward, it is my recommendation that a spending authority is established. Mr. Quinn may want to talk a little bit more about how that process is because this would be a change to the ordinance. So Mr. Quinn, if you don't mind sharing that. Thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So there's multiple steps in the process. First, we have a charter that contemplates that the city council will approve all the contracts. And therefore, we need to change that charter if we're going to delegate authority to the city manager by an ordinance. So we have to change a charter and adopt an ordinance that includes the details. Now, charter amendment requires this, one of two ways to amend the charter. One is that the Georgia General Assembly does it. The other is that under our home rule power, the city can amend its own charter with certain limitations that don't apply. The way the city amends its own charter is to adopt the same ordinance amending the charter at two consecutive regular meetings. So if you, you know, the document that you have in front of you doesn't say what the city manager's spending authority will be or give any details. It's just the charter change to then open up the possibility of putting that authority into place through an ordinance, which would be in the code of ordinances. I think, you know, like the city manager said, it's definitely an anomaly that the city of Clarkston has zero spending authority for the city manager. I think that there's a separate but related issue that Ms. Sadler Jones and I have talked about addressing at the same time, which is the city's procurement policy. So right now, the ordinance requires every single expenditure not just to be approved... So right now, the ordinance requires every single expenditure not just to be approved of greater than $5,000. Not only does that need to be approved by the council, but it's currently contemplated that that would be done through a public bid or proposal process, and it specifically says that we should do that by advertising in the Champion Newspaper, which is something, you know, it's one way to do it, but it's kind of old-fashioned. So I think there's a lot of modernization that could be done. What we have tonight is step one of several, and it is really, you know, we could adopt this, tonight's ordinance, tonight, and adopt the same one again in a month, and we would have changed the charter, but the city manager would still have no spending authority, and our procurement policy would still be the same. Those things would be done through a separate ordinance that is not before us tonight.
Okay. And Councilwoman, yes, Councilwoman.
I think this is the first time that I noticed or I realized probably that it could be a challenge for the city manager to have a limit or have no limit. And the fact that this was not in the discussion during our work session, it kind of concerns me that, I don't know if this is really urgent or not, I'm not exactly sure, but I would be in favor of tabling it, have a public discussion for it, and we need to hear from the public, and then we certainly can take action on it. But I, I could be in favor of it, but I, at this point, I definitely want to hear, definitely believe that we have to have a public hearing on this, and then we could decide, but I am not in favor of moving forward and deciding tonight.
Okay. Councilman Perkins and Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Mr. Quinn, just to make sure I understand what we're doing here tonight, we are not authorizing anything different. What we are doing is setting ourselves up so that we can adjust really anything related to contracts, purchasing limits, things like that, in a more expedient manner in the future, correct?
Yes, exactly. This is, amending the charter is the groundwork, because think of it like this, like take the United States government, for example. Any law that's passed that is in conflict with the Constitution is not an enforceable law. And that's analogous to the city's charter and Code of Ordinances. An ordinance that is inconsistent with the charter is not effective. So first, you have to amend the charter and then the ordinance, and this would be step one of two to lay the groundwork to adopt the policy.
And so then, just, and this is more, I think, for the public as well, and all of us here, just to be clear, what we're not doing tonight is granting any different authority. We could pass this and then turn around and say, you know what, we're gonna keep the $5,000 limit, we're gonna keep, you know, signing, you know, with the mayor. What it does is it opens, it essentially changes the process so that in the future, as we're listening to public input, we're able to act more quickly instead of there being a two-month turnaround for any future changes to our purchasing, you know, or spending policies. Say, new technology comes available, something else happens, we realize there's a problem we didn't foresee before. It allows us to address it in a faster manner, whereas right now, we would have, any changes, again, would have to go through the same process of two, two council meetings, again, a work session and council meeting, in order to pass the ordinance. Is there anything I said that's incorrect, Mr. Quinn?
No, I think that was all correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you. So this is about efficiency from my perspective. I agree with my Councilmember Perkins' comments and statements, but we have, and I'm perplexed slightly, because we just approved, most of the consent agenda was because she doesn't have purchasing power, and it had to come to us, and it was delayed, quite frankly, a lot of this stuff. We have a city clerk that's about to leave now, that's the number one, oh, the old business on here, in regards to the interim city clerk that we just met at the top of this meeting. So to say that we haven't seen this before, we don't realize the delay, and just for the general public, we have a strong city manager form of government. That means she handles the day-to-day. If she can't purchase anything that helps us with contracts, not to mention now, we have a budget. In that budget, if you look at the one we approved, there are special projects, half of these projects are on here, because she can't even pay them out, even get reimbursement for them, for some of the stuff that we have approved that we were gonna use our performance for, because she does not have the spending authority. So to the points that have already been made by the city attorney and my council colleague, Mr. Perkins, I mean, Councilman Perkins, I'm sorry, this is clear that she needs authority to manage the day-to-day. If not, half of the services that we have here would take a while until the next meeting for it to discuss, and remember, contracts still are going to come to us. It's just the functionality of government, and it doesn't function if she doesn't have the ability to purchase and move forward with half of these contracts.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yes, and thank you, Madam Mayor. And Mr. Quinn, my comments are for you, because I was the one that wanted to know if we could give Ms. Jones a spending limit and still have the right to vet our contracts. I think, I think you answered, but I'm a little confused because of the process we're going through. I didn't know we were gonna, you remember, I said there's a zero on the initial charter insert, and I wanted to know, is it possible, is this the only process that we can take to give Ms. Jones a higher spending limit without bothering the contract process?
We can, well, we can't give her, not her, because it's not about...
Right.
Personally, it's about the city manager.
Correct.
We cannot give the city manager the authority to enter into any contract without City Council approval unless we first amend the charter. Now, could that approval be given without changing the procurement policy? Yes.
And see, that's what I was under the impression, we were not trying to give her contractual authority. We wanted to give her more of a spending limit, so these $7,000, $6,000, and $10,000 things that she could go into would be taken care of, because it's within her scope of work. But you're saying that in order to do that, we have to insert a dollar amount in our charter?
No, nope.
Or we cannot, how do we get that $5,000 spend, spending limit increased without giving her the authority to enter into a contract?
Okay, so first, the city manager does not have a $5,000 spending limit. The city manager has a zero spending limit.
Zero, okay.
So, in, how do we increase that? Step one, amend the charter. Step two, pass an ordinance.
Well, and to clarify that, when you say amend the charter, amend the charter with what you currently have tonight, or is it something...
The language that we have before us tonight that just contemplates that the city manager as an officer can be delegated the authority that we're talking about.
Okay. Yes.
I also, I'm also wondering about the amount, so we heard the amount for cities like Decatur and Stonecrest, but I doubt that they have the same budget like us. I'm pretty sure they have a lot bigger budget, so it might be feasible for them to have such kind of limit. So I'm, so from, basically from $5,000, we are increasing it fivefold. Maybe we could...
We're not putting that tonight.
Yeah, we're not doing that, we're not doing that tonight.
None of that's before us.
All going through the charter.
It's a reading, and then Councilman Carol.
Okay. Okay, so I think maybe some history is appropriate here, so I'm old, I've been in the council a long time. A long time ago, the council had what we call a strong mayor form of government, where the mayor actually did contract for everything and actually did run the day-to-day management of the city. And about a little bit over a decade ago, they switched to a city manager form of government, which means the city manager is the one that runs the day-to-day of the city, and the mayor is more of heading the council and a policymaking function. And so this policy, I think, made sense when there was a strong mayor function and the mayor had to sign every contract, because back then, the mayor was the one entering in the contracts. Nowadays, mayor is not. The city manager is the one negotiating contracts. The city manager is the one managing the day-to-day of the city. So as long as we're going to have the city manager managing the day-to-day of the city, it makes sense that the city manager is the one that should be able to enter into contracts and expend money up to a certain limit, and above that limit would have to be approved by the council. And just with the size of the way Clarkston is today, just administratively, it's not feasible for every single contractor expenditure of money to go in front of the council, because there's just too many projects the city has grown. It's just, it may have been feasible, you know, 10 or 20 years ago when the city was smaller, but it just is not today, especially when the limit is just $5,000. So I think that this is a reasonable first step of letting the city manager enter into some contracts, and then the next step is to discuss, okay, what is the limit of the expenditure that we're going to give the city manager to have? And we don't have to decide at this point what the limit is, but the next meeting after this, the first time we have to adopt the charter, then it won't be adopted tonight, it'll have to be adopted at another meeting of the council, then we can discuss what is the actual limit that we can give the city manager to decide, and above that, the council has to actually approve it. Because it doesn't make sense, I think, for the limit to be this small, $5,000, and I don't think anyone is defending that, because that just makes the city council micromanage basically every contract, except for the tiniest contracts, which is not really our role. Our role is to really be the overall policymaking and the overall budgetary body, and it doesn't really make sense for us to micromanage, like, does this particular camera purchase or this particular, you know, small purchase have to be approved by the council? I think that's something you have to trust the city manager to some extent for, and of course, the city council's job is to supervise the city manager, make sure the city manager's doing a good job, so if we don't like the job he or she is doing, the council ultimately can hold the city manager accountable. I don't think you hold the city manager accountable by having the council have to look over every, like, $5,000 contract. So my suggestion is that we go ahead and adopt this ordinance tonight, and it will still go through another work session and another council meeting before it actually be formally adopted, because charter, charter amendments have to go through two meetings, and then at the next meeting, we can also discuss what is an actual limit that makes sense for the city manager to be able to contract towards, because again, I don't think $5,000 is a logical limit, and we can talk about what the limit is the next meeting.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, I agree with what many of the council members have noted, that what we're doing tonight is the first step toward changing our charter to allow us to set limits. And then, we need to have a good discussion about what those limits are and other reporting information, et cetera. The question about the items that we, the contracts that we adopted shouldn't come into issue, because the council voted to approve those contracts. Those contracts, I think, are, will go forward. So I totally agree, let's, in the sake of expediency, and the city attorney has said he would recommend we go ahead with this first step of changing our charter to allow us to set these limits. We do that tonight, we do the work about what that number should be, and then come back and change the charter and adopt our regulations at the same time.
Right. And Councilwoman Bell?
I have a motion.
Okay.
Have a motion to amend the city charter to authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city.
I second.
There's a lot of seconds there. Okay, I have, it's been moved and approved to, where am I? To adopt an ordinance amending the chapter charter to authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city. Any further discussion? Ready for a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, motion passed. And so with that, Mr. Quinn, that will, we'll have the next reading for this, or next steps? I just want to make sure, so we're all clear.
Sure. The next step is that the staff and I will publish a notice of proposed charter change, and then the same, exact same ordinance that you just voted to approve will be back on the agenda at the regular meeting in April, and either at that time or some subsequent time, according to the desire of the council, you would adopt an ordinance that sets the parameters for city manager's spending authority, perhaps also addressing the procurement regulations.
Right, and that was gonna be my next question. So for the next meeting, because right now, we don't really have a clearly defined, based on this, procurement process, so that would be provided at the next work session and council meeting for us to review, correct?
That is the intention of Ms. Sadler-Jones and I, and, you know, that's gonna be a quick turnaround, but I think we can execute it.
Okay, thank you. And again, as one, as Councilman Carroll stated, this is kind of one of those hangovers from where we did the change in government and not ensuring that we kind of looked through the entire process of how, from a day-to-day administration, to allow our city manager to be able to function in her, in the role that he or she has to take care of contracts as well as purchasing, whether it's food or a pencil or paper. Those are all things that, right now, really she can't do in terms of the way we found things are structured now, without having a contract come into the council. So thank you, council, for your input on this one. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm motion to adjourn.
You move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.